Good evening, Mr. Parentozzi.
Hi, Michelle. How are you today?
I'm doing well. How about yourself?
I'm doing okay. Good start to mask-free life.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been a lot of positive, a lot of happiness, from what I'm hearing anyway.
Yeah, we just have a couple of kids are a little concerned, you know, a little anxious, but we're working with them.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, you know, a natural response after
Absolutely.
everything that has been
You know, if you think of the math, if you're six years old, a third of your life has been this.
Yes.
Right?
You're watching a movie and he said, mommy, why aren't they wearing masks? This isn't normal. This isn't, this isn't what is normal. Yeah, so yeah, I mean, and, you know, we don't watch a lot. I don't have the news on in my house, you know, and, you know, some, some kids are exposed to it, you know, but who knows what they see.
At your place of work, what's the, is it optional or is it vaccination or mask?
So, at my work, it's optional, but we, I mean, you know, it's, we haven't, we haven't worn masks in a long time. There was a point in time where we did, this past time, they made everybody, like when it was rampant, regardless of vaccination, because, you know, it doesn't matter.
Right.
But we, I mean, we've been together for, like, we've all, we've never stopped working, you know. So, you know, for us, it was normal to be together, was normal to be back together without masks, you know, it was normal for people to wear them because they chose to, you know, so
Right.
been outside of it for a long time.
A friend of mine who works in the State House said that in the State House, you have to be vaccinated or wear a mask. But I looked online and I'm not sure he was right.
So, that doesn't sound right to me if they're
No, it doesn't.
body, but I know, like, for, like, we all, they made us get vaccinated. We had to. We were lost our job. But I don't, I don't think that they had the same, even funny enough, but they didn't have the same requirement, you know, so it was like, okay, so now, now you're monitoring everybody, our boosters too, like, I mean, just scientifically, it doesn't make sense. You know, I just wish that people could
Yeah.
you know.
Tonight, I'm going to recommend that all of our visitors do the attestation and about, you know, how they feel, and then recommend that they wear a mask if they're not vaccinated, but not enforce anything.
That, you know, I, I never, I meant to tell you, and I don't, nobody else is on here, right?
No.
But yeah, I mean, what I wanted to say is, like, the medic, like medically or scientifically, it doesn't make sense to
I know.
segregate one from the other, because
Yeah, I, I think I'm going to start out that way, just for a level of comfort with the staff and the parents and guardians who are still anxious, you know, and, but again, you know, simply say that, you know, you don't have to wear a mask, but if you haven't been vaccinated, we recommend that you consider it, you know, that's it.
Right, because then you get into, so how are you going to enforce that?
Or not.
An exemption.
I'm not going to ask anybody to show their vaccination documents, nothing like that. It's just going to be a request.
Yeah.
A kind, gentle request.
Yeah, and, you know, for the, for the teachers who I think who are nervous, you know, just like they're doing with the students who aren't vaccinated, is you wear your mask. If you have that concern, the only protection that you're truly going to have is if wearing a N95.
That's right. That's, I had mine on all day till everybody left.
You know, it, it's, it's hard for, it's hard for us in a sense of this type of thinking, because, you know, you know, my John has food allergies and, you know, peanuts, milk still exists in the world, you know, and people aren't going to stop having their meals with these things, and and that's fine. We, we adjust, and he needs to learn how to be hygienic, you know.
That's right.
And it's, it is scary, believe me. When he was little, I was so scared and it was so tough. But, you know, we, we were diligent in his learning of having to take care of himself, you know.
And in the long, and in the long run, that's the best thing for, for any person who's allergic is to, is to not, you know, be aware and the, as compared to try to control the environment, so you don't have to be aware.
I, I just, you know, I think for, for me and my family and my line of work, I see things all the time, and people don't know how close they are to death every single day. And, you know, if you're going to live your life in fear, you're not living, you know, you gotta
Well, we, we never get on an airplane. We never get in a car.
Ever, ever.
I remember when I was a little boy, I was probably eight or nine years old. I remember my father was driving on the New Jersey Turnpike when it was still a new thing.
Hey, everybody.
And somebody came over the median and flew over us and hit the car behind us.
Oh, yeah?
And it was like fifteen feet.
Yeah.
Just dumb luck. I mean, everyone, it was, it was a fatality for everyone in both cars.
Oh, yeah.
And I was so stupid, I didn't realize it till he explained it to me.
I swabbed somebody's brains off of the side of the Tew Williams Tunnel because they took the corner too fast, you know.
Yeah.
What happened?
Well, somebody's still at work besides me, Patty.
Michelle, I just had such a visceral reaction to that. My gosh, it makes me deeply appreciate just like, oh, what you do.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, my job just felt a lot easier first time in a while. Definitely feel that way next to Mercer's as well. I always do.
Yeah, I know. The thing I always think of Gina is, I'm glad I'm not hurt, at least when, but I'm dealing with people who are gone, you know, I don't have to be I'm just going to go in, what I do.
Different struggles.
True.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Gina, the waiting room was not engaged.
Yeah, I know. I came on too late.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Patty. Are you still in your office?
No, I, I'm at home, but I'm having issues with audio on my computer, so I, I can't hear any of you, so I am on my phone.
Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Patty, my computer, out of the blue, just started, all of a sudden, the audio started going like separate from Zoom, and I have to go to audio settings and adjust the audio myself inside of the Zoom, and then that has worked, for what it's worth. That literally happened recently, and the tech guy at my job explained it to me. He doesn't know why it started happening, though.
Thank you. I'm going to try playing around with it later.
Did you turn it off and then turn it back on again?
Yeah.
The best fix ever.
I like when you turn your computer off and it goes, it goes to airplane mode for no reason at all.
Right.
Why does that happen?
Tab mode, like, one time I was like, what the heck happened?
Actually, I think that because there's enough of us, we could probably call the meeting to order.
Okay.
So, I'll call the meeting for March 8, 2022, to order at 7:03 PM, if we could all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America, and to three public one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, for our first order of business, if we could discuss approving the, both the regular meeting minutes and the budget hearing minutes from February 15. They're included in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting and budget meeting minute on February 15, 2022.
I'll second the motion made by Ms. Dan.
In favor of approving the minutes as written. Unanimous? Motion carries. Mr. Parentozzi, could you walk us through the bill roll for tonight?
I would be happy to, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. This evening's bill roll totals $64,435.65, and it is a very typical bill roll. There are special education costs, there's food service costs. The only two things I'd like to point out to you is that we don't have an electric bill, so I can't give you our savings. The National Grid bill is gas only. I'm sure it's sitting in the mail inbox, but we didn't get to it yet. And the Robert Irvine and Sons $7,379 is for the two water bottle filters and filling stations and water fountains in the cafeteria. We replaced the old-style ones with both filtered and refrigeration units, and we got a really good price. The Irvine, if you remember, is the company that donated the labor for the one we have outside the nurse's office. So I thought it was appropriate for them to have the business, and they did come into, in the lowest and best bid. So, that was done during February break. Everything else is very typical. There's two costs for Chris Katzos, and as I have explained before, they are costs that we can only do online. We use our personal credit cards and then get repaid. The $53.13 is for QuickBooks. The $45 is for Constant Contact. And I think you I think you may notice that our NRT bill has been escalating. That's because we had a second student who is being transported a considerable distance, but we should be okay. We're going to have to transfer some money into the Special Education Transportation Budget Line item. I've already taught to the town accountant, and we know where it's coming from. There's not an issue with the bottom line. And, Madam Chair, with your permission, I respectfully ask a member of the committee to make a motion to approve $64,435.65 for this month's bill rolls.
I'll make a motion to approve $64,435.65 for this month's bill roll dated the 8th.
I'll second that.
All in favor of approving the bill roll as written, Mr. Sherlock, Ms. Karas, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Yama, myself. So, we'll move on to old business, which I'll start with the COVID-19 updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you haven't seen it as yet, I have sent you a significant amount of paperwork just for your convenience. If you want to follow along, or if not, I'll try to explain everything in pretty significant detail. Firstly, there are zero active cases in the entire town. Currently, there have only been two cases in March. The vaccination rate in the town is 106 five-to-11-year-olds or have been vaccinated out of 166. Interestingly, that's a higher percentage than we have on our portal, which means students have been vaccinated and have not reported it to our portal, or a significant number of those 106 students go to school somewhere else besides Johnson Elementary School, or most likely, most likely a combination of those two factors. In the school itself, we have no active cases, no close contacts, and for the entire month of February till today, we have had one case and two close contacts, none right now, and our attendance is very good. As you know, yesterday, we began our optional mask policy. The transition has been really smooth. Most students and most staff members are not wearing masks. There has been some anxiety by a very small number of both staff and students, but we're dealing with that collectively, and it's gone very, very well. As you know, on Thursday, I sent a letter to all the parents and guardians, and the important thing, I, I believe, in that letter was masks, obviously masks are going to be optional as of yesterday, but secondly, some people will continue to need to wear masks, and I, I detailed it right in the letter, and I, and we detailed it in the newsletter also. So, masks are to be worn in school by students and staff members who have symptoms of COVID-19 unless they've been cleared by the nurse, develop any symptoms of COVID-19 while in school, are returning from quarantine from day six to 10 after being cleared by the school nurse to return from quarantine, after returning from isolation after a positive diagnosis on day six to 10 after being cleared by the school nurse, and having been exposed to COVID-19 positive individual outside of schools, but meets the requirements for an exemption to be quarantined. So, masks are optional except for those, those specific cases. So, we've given our, our staff some guidelines, and I sent you a copy of today's bulletin. Basically, remember that there still can be some anxiety among staff and students, and to be sensitive to it. Mr. Andrews distributed and teacher showed a video about everyone having to make decisions based on what's best for them, and it was very well received. We're continuing our three-foot distance for desks, but that's a recommendation, not a requirement. We have noticed that certain students and staff members, when they're doing small group work, they do put their mask back on, and that's fine. That's, that's a good health practice. We are continuing to emphasize great hygiene, hand washing, sanitizing, cleaning, and disinfecting desk and other measures to control the spread of germs, all germs, and in classrooms. We are no longer requiring a six-foot distance for, for eating or snacks. We still have our cafeteria set up at six feet, though, and Mr. Andrews and I are just kind of observing that for a while and see, that's not a hardship on anyone. The, the students have learned to spin around and talk to each other, but it may not be long before we consider returning to our tables and benches. The, the issue with those is, of course, across the table is about two and a half feet, but literally, the children would be shoulder to shoulder. So, we're, we're holding off on that for a while. While small group work is possible, we're asking teachers to, at this time, be cognizant of the fact that when students are in small groups or working in partners, they obviously are very close together. That doesn't mean it's, it's not permitted. That means just be cognizant of, you know, probably shouldn't be a whole day of that type of work. And the last thing I want to mention is that I am recommending, excuse me, it's an administrative decision. So, I am making a decision unless I, you tell me not to. If you direct me not to, that's, that's fine. We're going to open it up to visitors. The visitors are going to be requested to do the attestation that says they're, you know, they don't have symptoms, they don't have a fever, etc. No one that they have been around has exhibited COVID-19 symptoms or had been identified with a positive test. We're also going to give them a recommendation that if they're not vaccinated, they wear a mask, but we're not going to require it. It's just, in my mind, that's as much for those of us who may be anxious as it is having a scientific basis. Again, we're, we're not going to, it's a recommendation. If somebody says, no, I'm not wearing a mask, we're not going to check if they're vaccinated. We're not going to ask them to prove it. We're just going to say it in a, in a very gentle way. And in that way, just continuing to pass the message that at this time, we have some concerns about the transmission of COVID-19. the transmission of COVID-19. I want to emphasize that we're not going to ask for proof of vaccination and we're not going to require a mask. We're just going to say it. And that's it.
It all sounds great. It sounds like we're moving in, you know, a really good direction. And I'm happy to hear that the students and staff, for the most part, are feeling comfortable with the way, I mean, and it's consistent with other communities. So all sounds good.
We had a student walking through the halls this morning telling every student and staff member that this student bumped into, how wonderful it was to see their face. It was absolutely enthralling, I have to say. And of course, I had my mask on, so. So I didn't scare them.
Um, speaking of which, Tony, I wonder, well, first of all, I agree wholeheartedly with Gina, like this feels not only that we're moving in the right direction, but we're moving with kind of what the data is telling us and that we made a decision, you know, a few weeks ago, that I think really is born out to be the right one. And we're in the place that we all wanted to be. And so that feels just so, so good, right? The thing that I wanted to ask, though, is because students and parents are and are trying to still, you know, figure out what they individually want to do in terms of masking, whether there's a, this might be a better question for Mr. Andrews, but I, there could be some pressure on kids that are wearing ma that have chosen to wear masks versus, you know, ones that aren't, and I even even not intentional pressure. And just being like, how are we aware of that in the school environment so that students who do either because of families who are immunocompromised or just because they want to wear one, you know, still, you know, feel like they can wear one and it's an okay environment for that. And what made me think of it is when I was walking my boys to school the other day, two kids yelled out the window as they were going by. They were like, Galileo, you don't have to wear a mask anymore. Monday and everybody was excited, you know, and we had all forgot. So we were just sort of business as normal. And then they were excited and they took off the mask because they wanted, and I left it up to them, right? Because I'm not in school, they're in school. But it did make me think about that, just the the penchant for pressure. So I wondered if that was something you were thinking about? And maybe I'm off base here about it, too.
Well, I'm going to, Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll turn that over to Kevin because he's more intimately involved in this. But we talked about this last week electronically and in person with the nurse. And I know Kevin has dealt with it with the staff. And we're observing it. But with your permission, Madam Chair, I'll let Kevin talk in more detail.
It sounds like that video also covered the information, right? The video that you showed the students?
It did, Madam Chair, I believe it did. I do, I do expect that there is a certain under unstated peer pressure between students to not wear a mask. I do not believe it's overt. I did notice in each class, there are probably one to three students wearing a mask on the first day. And before the end of the first day, I did notice that some of the students that were wearing a mask warning, were not even wearing it in the afternoon or or had it on their chin or things like that. So I don't think that students are reminding each other that they don't have to wear them in class. But I think that the norm and the comfort level might be changing in the school, just as it is at restaurants and in public. Of course, there are some students who are really, you know, want to make sure that they do wear their masks and families that have that choice. But given the numbers, it's it's a bit, you know, it's a bit of an outlier, I think, right now in the classrooms for students who are wearing masks. So it'd be interesting to hear from parents, I guess, with their preferences.
Yeah, and I think that if that is an issue for a family, they'll probably reach out to you and figure that out. I think it's just for the kids, you know, there are some articles in the newspapers about how immunocompromised people, older people, you know, and may, you know, that really should be still being pretty careful, you know, about this. And I personally, you know, fit that category. And I just was thinking about what about, you know, kids that do or kids that live with elderly parents or an immunocompromised person in their house. And we do have some of them in the school system.
Yes, we do.
Anecdotally. So again, we don't have complete control over it. Certainly, parents can come to you, but I wanted to raise it just because I think it's something to keep in mind that if there's a kid that persists in wearing a mask, making sure that, you know, that there's an overt conversation about that that's okay and that.
Absolutely. And that's what we did Monday morning on announcements. And, you know, I had mine with me. And I have to admit that I think every time I cross my office threshold door, I say, oh, what do I need to do? And so there is that kind of latent anxiety about the whole situation. So I think we all feel that. And I do think that, as far as I know, students are being, you know, compassionate and aren't really making an issue of it that I've seen.
Great.
Madam Chair, through you, the other example is Mr. Andrews and I were speaking with a staff member today about the fact that 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 particular grade had a little bit higher number than other grades of students who needed to wear masks for a variety of reasons. So what the teacher did was put that group of kids sort of together so that the kids who had masks on were surrounded by other kids who had masks on. And so it was a little enclave as compared to being interspersed in in the larger group. And when asked how that worked, the teacher felt that the students with masks felt a little less anxious, or it seemed to be. So we're, you know, we're trying to keep our eyes open, our ears open and be and adjust as needed.
Passionate education here in the hunt, moving forward.
Yeah.
Masking on buses. I know you sent us information about, you know, following the policy of the, you know, school where the students are going to.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you for reminding me that. I just saw that on my notes. I've contacted both of our bus companies and I and spoken to the administration and informed that the bus companies that the receiving schools would be the decision maker on when masks in school buses came off. So a concrete example, and our most common example, would be our seventh through 12th grade students are traveling every day on the buses to to Swamp Scott Middle School and High School. Even though our mask came off this week, on those buses, the the students are expected to wear their masks until next Monday, when the Swamp Scott Mask Optional Policy takes effect. We also have students going to Marblehead and NEC, the Collaborative. And once again, those particular receiving districts will be determining when the masks come off for those, that small number of students. It, that seems to be the most logical and health conscious way of doing it, rather than, you know, having our student that may be going to Beverly to the Collaborative, that one student doesn't wear a mask and everybody else has the one. Just didn't didn't seem logical to me.
Any questions about the COVID policies from the committee? All right, we can move on to, oh, the facility update, Mr. Parentozzi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We now have two groups using the building. We have a basketball group and a lacrosse group. We have two other groups have asked for the paperwork but haven't gotten it back yet. I'll move on, Madam Chair, with your permission, unless there's a question. The cafeteria fans, we got a bid that was $13,000 less than the first bid. So we are moving forward with putting very, two very large fans in the the top of the cafeteria to make cool air in the summertime and to drive the hot air down to where the human beings are in the wintertime. And I'm, we're going to wait to make sure we have the funds for that from this year's budget, but I'm 95% sure we will. This Thursday, I'll be meeting with one of the two consultants I contacted regarding our gym roof. And I have pulled the plans for the roof. They're sitting next to me here. And this consultant will do a variety of things. We'll look at the roof, we'll make recommendations about the, whether or not we're going to need to increase the insulation value of the roof. Excuse me. Because if that's a requirement, then the cost of the roof will triple. And we will definitely be in the in the business of seeking MSBA support. So we'll know more probably within a month. And once again, I want to remind you, that's not for this summer, that's for the summer of '23, because it'll take that long to get all the paperwork for MSBA and get on their list and all those good things. And then I just want to remind everyone, and I want to thank Mr. Sherlock and Ms. Caris for joining me. I communicated with our liaison today and asked for the the Zoom code. And then the bell went off in my head is it's probably online. So I went online and I sent both of you the Zoom code and the password. So we're all set for tomorrow. The most exciting thing that'll happen tomorrow evening is that I will attempt to do a presentation again. This time without Kevin, so it's going to be interesting. I do want you to know that there has been a change in the budget amount. And I'm going to be a little bit technical now. Our software package is exact. So when we put a budget together, every budget line item has dollars and cents. The town uses a software page, a software package, it rounds to the nearest dollar. Therefore, you approved, and I'm going to go real fast, the $4,357,564.73. What the Board of Selectmen and Town Meeting will see is $4,357,568. So we're going to get $3.27 more than we asked for. Now, there's two ways of handling this, and my recommendation is to just let it lay. Because Mass General Law doesn't prohibit the Board of Selectmen or Town Meeting from giving you more money than you want. It just doesn't permit them to give you less. So that's basically a rounding, but I didn't want you to be surprised when you saw it. And I wanted it to be explained to you.
Take the money and run.
Yeah, yeah. With $3.27, we can buy two thirds of a gallon of gas.
All right, thank you so much.
One more quick, one more quick thing. The policy manual is done. The index is done. The only thing left is for us to plug the numbers, all 429 numbers into the index. So Chris is not here this week, she's on vacation until Thursday. So we should be able to get that put away too sweet as quickly as possible. That's the good news. The bad news is I have a backlog of about five policies that need to be updated. So as soon as we get the book done, we'll start adjusting it. But we have it in Word now, so we can do it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews, would you like to unmute and get the principal's report for tonight?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chair, and thank you for the reminder. So for this evening's principal's report, March 8, 2022, I would like to let you know that our summer enrichment program is, has a healthy number of students, I'd say. We have 25 students currently enrolled, 15 in grades K and one, and 10 students in grades K and grades two through five. That's how we're looking at breaking down the groups. This is what we did last year, and it seemed to work out well for the two groups. We are hiring two, looking to hire two teachers and one paraprofessional. We've already conducted interviews on those positions and believe that the superintendent will support those hiring recommendations. But we'll need to still go through references on one individual, but they look fantastic. We look to have some really great folks involved with it and looking forward to the program. We've also been working with Special Education Department on the extended year services. And so we've just, on Monday, interviewed a special education teacher. So we're just about ready to have all of our summer hires completed with the help of Superintendent Parentozzi and Mary DeGuardia. On the, I have an achievement data presentation that I'd like to share with you, but if I can move that to the end of my presentation, I wasn't sure if that was on a separate item. Is that on a separate item, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll save that for that moment. And so that's on teaching learning. And then I want to also update you on the Heritage Trail Enhancement Project. I was able to meet with the Community Preservation Committee for the second time. And they make made a recommendation to break the project into a two-year project. And so as a reminder, this is the idea to have a trail that starts at Flash Road and goes to the Johnson School, which would allow students to ride their bicycles, parents to walk, strollers to be pushed from Flash Road over to the school and not have to go in front of DPW and the fire department. The community and also it would include a lot of signage and natural history areas as as they walk through. Looking at a first year of a planning and support year and looking to so to have a landscape architect look at the space and determine what would be needed. And in the second year, we would have installation done. The total request right now is for $40,000, cover the cost of the planning. And then in the second year, also cover the cost of the installation. They, the CPC was very favorable of the proposal. And I think in my experience that anytime you have a walking trail, rail to trail space, you really see that the residents in the area, all of a sudden, are really using that area a lot more and getting outside and enjoying it. I already noticed, actually, I was checking the line out from in the snow a couple of weeks ago, and I noticed that it was actually already a route that folks use informally. And on the second page of your packet, I've given you a map of the proposed route that the CPC recommended, which would take the path more towards the middle of the open space. And it gives you a nice sightline coming off of Flash Road to the ocean and Bailey's Hill, then turning towards the two large willow trees that are behind the baseball fields and then going around the Little League fields, sort of between the golf course and the other sports fields, and then over to the Johnson Elementary School. We're getting ready for MCAS as well. And so I want to let you know that those dates will be coming up. Students are having practice sessions right now. They'll be using their Chromebooks as they have in the past. And I expect that to be a smooth process. And I'd be happy to share some information later in the evening on our results. We have a new tool to look at the data a little bit more deeply and over the years.
I just asked for my, for my minute, did you say that each year, the total would be 40,000 or it would be? So a total of 80,000 or the first and second year are a total of 40,000? so a total of eighty thousand or the first and second year are a total of forty thousand for the Heritage Trail Enhancement?
For the two years, it would be forty thousand total.
Thank you.
Total for the project.
Thank you.
It's a great project. Thank you so much for being so creative and thinking about that and collaborating with CPC. It sounds like a great win for the community.
My pleasure.
Thank you for the update. Oh, man, are you gonna say something else?
No.
I think you'll be on shortly for the student achievement. So next order of business is public comment correspondence and community input. So I will open it up for discussion if anybody would like to make a comment in the chat or would like to speak out loud. You can certainly state your name in the chat and make a oral statement. And while we're waiting to see if anybody wants to contribute, have any members of the committee had any correspondence with the members from the community? I have not.
I have not. I have not.
I have not.
So we can move forward. Mr. Andrews, if you want to, I can give you the host privileges. You can share your screen.
Fantastic.
And then you can give us our presentation on student achievement.
Great. Great. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. It was convenient that Superintendent Parentozzi shared with me a new tool that I believe the state has contracted with a company that is helping teachers and educators to more easily access and use their, their MCAS data and other data as well. Over the years, we've had access to the data, of course, albeit a bit later than when the test was taken. So the test will be taken in end of the school year, and then we'll get the results October or as late as December, depending on the school year. This year, they've been able to take the data and made it so that we don't have to go into a data portal to pull all the different reports down. It's a lot easier for us to really get into it and see how we've done over the past years. And so for the purposes of this brief report, I'd just like to share some slides that I have on it. So what they see here, so what we have is, it's called Massachusetts Next Gen Explorer, and it's a free tool from the DESE. This screen is just meant to show you all the different aspects of some of the parts. And typically, when we get into looking at data, after the discussion or during the discussion, folks say, well, what about this group and how about this group? And so at the end, I'd be happy to hear from folks if they had questions about a more specific group, a year, or other factor that they thought we should, should look at. So I'm just gonna go through some slides. I'm happy to take questions as we go. We looked first at the percentage of students that were meeting or exceeding ELA in, in ELA over the previous years. And so here we see that it started out at fifty-two percent in twenty-seventeen, and since then it's risen to sixty-three percent. And this is what the state is looking for, looking for, I think of it as getting a C or better in ELA, being, doing okay or fantastic. And, and that's what the sixty-three percent represents, is that we have sixty-three percent of our students currently doing okay or fantastic in ELA in grades three through six. And that's compared to fifty-two percent in twenty-seventeen. In math, we looked at a similar item, starting at fifty-two percent. Now we're at forty-two percent. And so we've seen a decrease over the previous ten years in that area, and we want to look at, you know, what's different. One thing that's different is students. And so one challenge with this data is that, you know, we're comparing the twenty-seventeen group of students to a twenty-twenty-one group of students. And so sometimes we look at cohort analysis as compared to annually. And it might be that somebody has two windows open, and that's why the deck is there. If we look at the average.
It might help if the rest of us all mute.
I was gonna ask a question. Mr. Andrews, is there, is there any other reasons that you, I mean, obviously the students are different, but you know, has there been any discussion about other reasons that the math scores are declining?
We haven't had an opportunity to, to look at that right now. You can see in twenty-twenty, we didn't have the MCAS at all. And so we, you know, we want to look at, you know, what are the, what might be the causal factors in that area? And so we'll be investigating that for sure.
I also had a question. I know this data is for grades three through six. Is that, do you have information for the children in the lower grades? What their achievements or how they're measured or their achievements are measured?
Certainly, we do. We're using, we're using iReady in the lower grades. And I'd be happy to make a presentation about those scores. We have used though, the, so last year, that was the first year we used iReady. And so this year, we have iReady for the second year, and so we're able to start seeing growth, which means we can compare how a particular student did in second grade compared to how they did in first grade. And iReady sets a growth score for each student and then determines how they grew over that time period. Those, those numbers look very promising, and I'd be happy to put a presentation together for that for next meeting. The it was interesting, and iReady, what they do is they compare the student to their grade level and say what percentage of students are at above or below. And so roughly, it reports out that we have forty-five percent of students at grade level. And then around twenty to thirty, this is school-wide, twenty to thirty percent of students one grade level below, and then a ten percent, two to three grade levels below. And at first blush, you look at that and you say, wow, that's kind of concerning. But then in looking at their examples for the explanations, it actually looked a lot better than the national average. So right now, what I want to do is try to find out how I can get from iReady to a nationwide comparison.
And then also for iReady, children who are in grade or what grade, I guess my question is, I know that my fifth grader or my fourth grader had taken iReady, and I think also in fifth. Is that right? And how, so is that data also used in how is that kind of compared or is it compared to the MCAS results? I guess like kind of an assessment of where do you get the best picture of a student?
Sure. So I find that iReady is better at giving teachers a, a month-by-month snapshot. And so, and it actually goes right down into the standards and the strands. So you can get into geometry in fourth grade. And it can give you how is, how are the fourth graders doing on geometry, not just on math? And as I discussed at the beginning of the presentation, you're really able to kind of determine where we are in those slices and then use that to drive the instruction. And, and to understand, okay, these students are having difficulty in this area. And the really wonderful thing is that we are starting to look at, can we map iReady to standards and then use those standards to recommend IXL skills? And that's kind of the next step right now for, for education as a whole. Some companies are starting to offer, and we took a quote from a company that would take MCAS, iReady, and even the teacher's classroom DRA scores that they use to do with, with students, where they read a book and the student reads a book aloud to them and they take a score, and they put it on a spreadsheet that I have. So I've used Google Sheets for that, but we've got, we're trying to get that into one data source so that a teacher can look at all these pieces together to see if they're supporting each other and, and where the, any gaps lie in our instruction. And also to drive instruction, really, that's what we want it to do. We want it to really be more timely. And iReady is a bit more timely because we do it now three times a year. And that was, last year was the first year in the pandemic. They made it free. This year, we're paying for the assessments, and we're doing it three times a year. And we'll have a little bit more PD on that this year. We're not involved in the kindergartners in it right now because of the technology and also their developmental level. But we have that ability. There is iReady for kindergarten. And we're finding that the first few sixth graders are really quite comfortable using that type of assessment.
That's all great. It's, it's a great thing to hear that it's driving the instruction. And I like the frequency of it as well, rather than just a one-time per year. And I appreciate all of that information. So thank you.
My, my pleasure. It's, it's, you really do have to have it in a timely way and also in a way that's easy to digest. And I, I see that with iReady, that it's easy to digest. You can easily drill down into the students. I can do that as a principal, and then the teacher can easily do that themselves. It's not just a paper copy that's in the heart, that's in their file in the main office. Or, you know, it is really ready, readily accessible. The MCAS is not quite as readily accessible compared to the iReady. And also, iReady maps it to IXL skills and to everyday math skills.
Do you foresee a timeframe for next year to get the K group into the iReady assessments, or what are you looking at for that?
I think I'd like to talk to the Kate, the kindergarten teacher about, about that. My gut is to give kindergartners a chance to really come into school in their first year and let them grow and, and see how they do. So that there isn't an assumption in November that a kindergartner would be able to know a certain amount of material. So that, that's, that's what my kind of first thought is on, on using iReady. Currently, we start assessing kindergartners in January and in, in order to give them that time to grow. And so I could see adding kindergarten iReady in spring so that everybody who's in kindergarten has an opportunity to learn the skills, focus on what they need to be learning, and then feel comfortable with it, and then also hopefully understand how to use an iPad. In kindergarten, now we do have, I want to say ten or fifteen iPads that are new iPads, enough that the whole class could easily complete in, in assessment on them. And, and I could see doing that either at the end or in spring of the kindergarten class year.
Great.
You.
Mr. Andrews, thanks for this report. A couple, a couple of things, if that's okay. Well, one is, I think, a couple of suggestions maybe for, for next year, you know, or this fall, when we look at the MCAS results from this administration. You know, if you and, and Mr. Parentozzi, you know, like this idea, but I think comparing it to state average is important to be able to show where in the hot posits with the state. So keeping that in mind, we beat the state and the state average, which is, I think, just an important marker. It's not the only marker, but I think the achievement for ELA for the state was forty-six percent for grades three through eight, I believe, in thirty-three percent math. And math represented a drop for the state. So we dropped and the state dropped in math between nineteen and twenty-one, if I'm correct.
You're absolutely correct, and that baffles me because I wish that the state would norm the math scores every year. I just don't understand that piece. How can you say the whole state went down? I mean, you have so many students taking the test. I would think that the number of students would be the norm.
Right. But I think, you know, I think it helps tell the broadness of the story. And, and because we want to, you know, compete and be, you know, continue making sure that our kids, you know, are doing as well as they, they can do, I think also looking at similar towns as a marker, you know, might be important to think about. I don't know if that necessarily belongs here, but that might be something to look at. You may already do that. And I also think looking, maybe doing a dive and really looking into the data, like how students within IP are doing on the test and, and differentiating by, by race. Just so that we make sure that we keep an eye on any trends, whether positive or growth trends that we want to see, you know, as we disaggregate our population of kiddos. It feels important just to give a little bit of a broader and deeper picture. And again, nothing, nothing to do. You, y'all have to, you know, enough to do, and you can dig for, you know, this is all publicly available data. But just might help with some, some breadth and light to the, to the report, but I appreciate you bringing it to us. We know how our kids are doing. That feels important. Thank you.
It's, it's my pleasure. On a couple of those points, we do have, you know, we, we have looked at racial data and subgroup data. Challenge, our, our numbers are often too small for them to report. And so the percentage, the, 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 if you don't have twenty students in that group, they won't give you a, a number. And so that, that was one thing that was kind of interesting to me, although students who have an IP, we can typically get that information, and I think that's really helpful. And also looking at growth data and looking how, how much the students have improved. That, that's been a trend in, in student data.
Point taken. That's great.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Andrews, when you presented us with the MCAS data, I think, you know, perhaps this data in the past, you have presented us with the Massachusetts numbers as well, so that we do have that perspective, which I think is, is indeed really helpful.
Absolutely. And we have picked about five towns to compare ourselves to. One of them, interestingly, is Truro out on the Cape, which it's a similar size, similar makeup in terms of student body. And that's been helpful to compare us. And I, and I was able to pick this Free State tool that they gave us. They said, okay, name five towns that you want to compare yourselves to, and we'll, we'll plug them in for you. And so we have those in, in this dashboard that we have. And so that's, that's a great area, Ms. Anderson, to look into. And I think I picked Orange, I picked Athol, and Truro, and then a couple others. Small towns that were rural, because actually Naha is considered a rural town. And then, and seeing how we did compared to those. And as you mentioned, I just have a slide up right now that, you know, the average skill score in the state is five oh one for ELA, and we're at five oh five. In math, the average skilled score is four ninety-eight, and we're at four ninety-six in twenty-twenty-one. So, you know, we are besting the state in pretty much all areas as expected.
The wildcard for us too was, you know, being primarily in person. And there were, of course, challenges even within, you know, even though we're lucky enough in some ways to have in-person classrooms for our kids, you know, our educators were still posed with a million challenges over the past couple of years in delivering their content and doing it in different ways, teaching at home while they were also teaching in the classroom. There were so many, so many things. So I know some people have asked questions on, you know, did we, did we blow it out of the water the past couple of years because we were in person while, you know, other communities were remote, especially during that one school year? And I think, you know, I don't know, I defer to you, but it seems like in one respect, I would have expected us to score so much higher than everybody else because, because we had the luxury of having most of our kids in person. But at the same time, I imagine that there were a lot of less tangible challenges that the, that really were posed both to our teachers and to our students. First, first of all, you know, doing Um, first, first of all, you know, doing more than one job at once, you know, teaching at home and teaching in the classroom. That's huge. And then also, um. You know, the different environment they were teaching in, worrying about health concerns while teaching. There are probably so many things that went into it, but. I was just curious. I know that people have kind of speculated, you know, did we do so much better than everybody else because of that? And if not, then why the heck not? But. I'm guessing, and I don't know what you think.
Students at home uh, didn't have to take the MCAS. That's one thing to consider. So that we probably had a much, we, I know we had a much higher rate of participation than average. So students who are in person. Um, had to take the MCAS and their scores were reported. Um, anybody who was remote was able to take the MCAS and their scores were not included. Um, and so I know that remote scores are not included in the state um, reporting. Um, so we had. Ninety percent of our students that were eligible for the MCAS, take the MCAS roughly. Um, and so we had a much higher uh, participation rate last year than most schools.
That's actually really interesting.
Yeah, it's, it's just another, you know, it's really difficult over the past, you know, these past couple of years to really compare year to year.
I look at, um, I actually, for me, you know, I'm at, I, I feel this feels really good. I expected. Uh, everybody, including uh. Schools in person to go down over the last couple of years. And I get your point, um. Ms. Sherlock, in terms of the comparison, because if one school is able to hum along. Um, and and other schools can't even hum. Then obviously, the one humming along is going to do better than the ones that aren't humming. But I, um, but really, like when you, if you ignore that, right, and you just think about, you know, our school. Um, it's the same sort of, it's the same thing, you know, teachers are going to come to school. They're going to do the best they can. Students are going to come to school. They're going to do the best they can, and they're going to. See where it all shakes out on the test. But under enormous strain, even when you're in person, um. Contending with like, are students less checked in because of mask wearing? Um, are students falling behind because of illness of either staff or student or parent or whatever, right? The amount of times that we um, had, you know, we've had different delays and stops and, you know, things like that, even with being open that we had to, you know, deal with. All of that is going to contribute to um, to less coming in for students on a summative type assessment like the MCAS. And so I think, you know, I mean, overall, I kind of am like. We got through it. We're still standing. Teachers are still teaching. Kids are going to school. It's really all that matters. This is unprecedented. I'm going to say something that's probably anathema. Tony will call me later. Who the hell cares, right? Like, we're humming along and that's great. We get an A. Um, let's go into uh, next year, which feels like the first, the first, like, kind of real year forward that we'll have. And see where we're at then. But I think in looking back, the fact that we were able to increase is in one area is extraordinary and the decrease in the other is not that bad. And when you. Think of the stressors that teachers have had to carry to pull this off, the administrators, you know, we're doing well. I, I, that's where I sit anyway. Um, so, um, yeah.
Madam Chair, that concludes my uh, brief summary here of achievement this past school year, and I'm happy to um, dive deeper. And present on I ready if anyone's interested in that in the next meeting.
If we could hear about the um, younger grades that aren't captured in MCAS, that sounds like. Would be really useful information. Uh, if you could bring it to the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just had one more question about um, student achievement and kind of thinking about. Um, other measures. And one of the things I was trying to think about, because I know we're in an elementary school, and so athletics really isn't. Something that's measured at, you know, where we don't have um, not athletics in the school per se. Um, but one of the other things, and please tell me if I'm not thinking of this correctly. Um, is the social piece for uh, student achievement. And so. I'm wondering, you know, with um. Successes for students, um, are there areas where? You know, we can measure, are there um, incidents of bullying, um, incidents of negative behaviors and? Um. How can we support uh, an environment to um. Teach everybody to be um. A helper, you know, and I, I know that there's a lot um, going on at the school currently. And so like, thinking about um, like filling somebody else's bucket and. Um, you know, those types of things and and seeing the success. Um, or places that we need to improve socially.
Certainly, as a Madam Chair through you, that's a, a great question. I think uh, one that's obviously more difficult to measure. Um, but I think that. Um, you know, and I also noticed that there's, this changes, it seems almost seasonal. You know, we came back from school. Uh, no masks and it was warm out and there was no snow and my goodness was I busy. Um, so, so I, I, I think that um. I, I know as a, as a school principal, I'm just really um, happy to have the students that I have at the school and I feel that, you know. Whenever I speak to a student, they're respectful and they understand the expectations that we have a connection and that they. Have empathy when they've done the wrong thing. Um, how to get that into a kind of a. A number would be challenging, I think, but I, I think it's something that we want to, you know, discuss as a staff, and that would probably be more of a. You know, staff meeting discussion that we had probably two years ago when we were talking about school-wide expectations for behavior and. Um, also how we treat each other. Um, Miss Sullivan's doing a great job with that and. Um. It's probably not something that we could put a quiz around, but, you know, we could look at. How often are students stopping learning or how often are they um, helping a friend out?
Remember initiatives that were done in the past, like the uh, rack stick, some of the random act of kindness. You know, things like that seem to be such great motivators and. In more normal years, for lack of a better term, I know that that was something that was easier to concentrate on, and I'm sure it's still being concentrated on, but. Um, you know, things like that that were associated with, you know, they seem like really great motivators for kids and helping people kind of focus on. You know, getting some positive reinforcement for those positive behaviors. Uh, it's something I know that you've done a lot of in the past of great to, great to get to finally talk about this stuff more again, isn't it? It's really nice.
Absolutely. Um, Madam Chair through you, that our bandwidth has really been occupied through um, how to do testing, how to get the results out, where to put the results. Do here and there. And we're are still looking forward to uh, continuing initiatives that we've had in the past.
Sounds great. Thank you. Right, we can move on to new business. Um, the artwork donation.
Parentozzi was just um, reacting to that.
Oh, there you go. I had, I had turned my mic off because you asked me to, and I forgot to turn it back on. Um, a couple of things. One is our bandwidth has been absorbed by keeping healthy. Um, it has been dominating uh, academia, social and mental. You know, we've, we've kept our, we kept our eye on it, obviously, but you, we were all hyper focused on keeping people. Healthy, you know, and. Uh, we did a great job at that. That should never be um, underestimated how much energy and time it took by, by everyone. And then the second thing is, during the pandemic, we replaced. Fifty percent of the grade teachers who are being tested by MCAS. And we didn't have them person to person to help them. Uh, with their professional development. Um. Anyone who has been in the business a, a while will recognize the comment I'm about to say. When, when new teachers come into schools, they are much better prepared for the social studies and English. Curriculum than they are for the mathematics and science curriculum at the elementary level. If we hadn't had the uh, pandemic, those. Those staff members who joined us would have had a lot of PD in math and science. We didn't get to it. We just didn't get to it yet. We are. Uh, Mr. Andrews is doing a great job of, of kickstarting everything again. For example, we just had some training in Wilson reading. Person in person for the first time in a while. Um, the week of March twenty second, uh, Northeastern University will rejoin us. For uh, science. So, um, it's not really an excuse. It's, it's a justification for why. Are we weren't even better than we were. And the other thing is, Kevin, do you have the SGP numbers?
Um, not in front of me on this update.
Okay, so, uh, I, I, uh, next time we.
Oh, I do. I do have them. Excuse me. And I already made Gina the host again.
Do you want to share them?
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, and so let me explain. Um, I know Beth knows what I'm talking about, but. SGP is a unique um, data point. What it does is it takes the, all the scores of the third graders. And then when they move up to fourth grade. It compares them to everybody else in the state. So if, if you got a fifty, you would be as good as everybody in the state. This is, this is proficiency, not. Do you have SGP?
Yep.
Oh, good. This is the number that really matters. Um.
Except, uh, Superintendent Parentozzi, for, for some reason, and I can't explain why.
That's a great, that's a crazy number. That's, that's.
Yeah, so. So what, what it does, as you mentioned, it, it compares your group, you as how much you grew over the years.
Right.
And.
So, so what this does, the SGP and and we'll, we'll get it to you.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's what Beth was talking about in a really fine tune, because what it does is it compares. The growth our third grader, it actually, it, it compares the individual's growth. Against the growth of everyone who moved the grade. At the same time, every uh, that student did. And then, of course, it averages it. Uh. And because what is missing is the reliability of the test. And SGP tries to even out the reliability issues. Because the state has, of course, cybermetric experts trying to predict which questions will get the best answers. And sometimes in certain years, they're better than in other years. Uh, the famous story in Massachusetts is one of the writing assignments for middle school students one year. Was it uh, to ask them to uh, give a description of a trunk. So students who were from African countries thought about an elephant's trunk. Um, some students thought about a pirate's trunk. Some state, you know, it was, it was the quality of the question that was the problem. And so SGP, SGP tries to even that out because no matter what the question was, you're compared. To everyone who moved up a grade with you. So we'll get that to you.
Absolutely. A couple of other slides. They just had this proficiency breakdown that um, we didn't get to yet, but. Um, just that exceeding expectations is increase in ELA. Um, and the, the needs improvement has decreased over the previous four years as well. And then in math, it looks like things are really kind of up and down. Um, so we have, you know, we have an increase in, in. The top light green is um, is exceeding expectations. The lime green is meeting. And then the um, the light gray are uh, not meeting expectations. And so. You know, they, they basically fluctuated over the years in math. And that's what we want to kind of dig into a bit more.
And, and the uh, the real, the real lesson in this year is the PM, the partially meeting expectations. That would really highlight uh, new teachers who have, don't have the experience of. You know, where the kids are coming from, where the kids are going, you know, um. Uh, so we'll, we'll be working hard on that, I assure you.
Well, all these metrics are really, you know, important and helpful, and I'm sure they really help guide. You know, some of the work that we're doing to try to adjust curriculums or delivery. It also has been pointed out in the past, I believe there are meetings by the administration that, you know, our small class sizes present a challenge when we're trying to interpret this data. Um, because our N is so small. So, you know, if we have a class of eleven students.
Right.
Um, we could have a couple of students who are struggling or a couple of students who are exceeding and they could skew our data. You know, quite a lot as opposed to having, you know, a hundred.
That's right.
Or however many and being able to take a bigger perspective. So, so. That is always something to keep in mind, I believe, from what you've said before at these meetings, when we look at these numbers for our particular school.
Madam Chair, I would like to put a real great spin on what Ms. Sherlock just said. Because our numbers are so small, every single kid matters one hundred percent. And that's the way we are looking at it. Because like you said, uh, one student's nine point three percent of eleven. So, uh, if one student isn't doing well, the, I mean, the whole group looks like it's not doing well. And uh. That means it's our obligation to make sure one hundred percent of our students are achieving at a high level. And we're working very, I assure you, we're working very hard on that.
I think um, as we start to shift from, you know, focusing. On getting from day to day and week to week, as we have been over the past year or two and, and, you know, refocusing on the bigger picture. And I, I really thank Michelle for bringing up the topic of, you know, this is, this is what our eye and the prize is, you know, this is where our focus. Should be and always bringing it back to, you know, what, what should we be supporting as a school committee to help? Um, you, Mr. Andrews, to support the teachers and staff to make the, you know, our, our small community as successful as possible. So I, I appreciate you sharing this information with us so we can help, you know, move forward and focus our efforts um, on whatever's needed for the students.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great. Um, all right, now we can move forward, I think. Um, the artwork donation from Nancy Spears and Ken Smith. I think there were pictures in the packet.
Uh, Madam Chair, there's two things regarding art. The first one is I included a picture of our beautiful bulletin board as you come into the uh, Flash Road. And I want to make sure you know that Heidi Fiore does a fantastic job of keeping the interior of our building uh, looking beautiful. Isn't that a great bulletin board? Uh, and you have a picture of it in your packet, a colored picture.
Uh, March Madness.
Yeah, March Madness. It's a great bulletin board. And then the second thing is that uh, we have been uh, through the generosity of Nancy Spears and Ken Smith. We have this beautiful original uh, painting that has been donated to us. Uh. Um. I'm not a mu, enough of an artist to tell you the style it's done in, other than exciting. It, it just is a beautiful, beautiful uh, invigorating piece of art. So we're uh, with your um. Permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask for a motion and uh, vote to accept this piece of art from Nancy Spears and Ken Smith.
I have a motion from one of the members of the committee.
So moved, happily so.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Sherlock. All in favor of accepting the art from Nancy Spears and Ken Smith. It's unanimous. Motion carries.
Impressionism.
Oh, yeah, probably. It's really nice.
Where it really is.
Do you know where it'll go?
No, I, that is Mr. Andrews and the staff's decision.
Uh, it's actually, um, already been hung right just to the right of our AED, uh, right where the students um, sit outside the office. So it's in a very prominent place.
Excellent.
While we're on the topic of arts, um, I just wanted to shout out our music teacher. Um, my son. Uh, came home, my wife and I play jazz every morning. My son came home, my wife and I play jazz every morning and a lot of Ella Fitzgerald. And he said, you know, my teacher is teaching us all about jazz, and I knew Harold learned a lot about her. And we learned a lot about Louis Armstrong and was able to name these, you know, jazz artists that he's been learning about in school. And I just, you know, Black history is all of our history, and it was just really wonderful for, to hear that coming through. I really care about that. And just while we're on the subject of arts, wanted to shout out that important work. Well, too many schools leave Black history at Martin Luther King and move on, and it was wonderful to see May Jameson coming in and jazz artists, and that was great.
Well, we'll make sure we pass that along. Thank you.
Another update on the summer programs?
I think Mr. Andrews covered it all. He mentioned that we had four staff members in the works, and actually, I've already written letters that are in my computer that I'll be sending out on Thursday for a lead teacher, the special education teacher, a speech and language pathologist, and a paraprofessional, which means we're still looking for an OTPT and academic teachers. And we should have those sewn up quickly.
Great. Are there any other personnel matters?
Not really.
Any other business from the committee? Great. If there's no other business, we can take a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene to open session. You can see on the agenda the reasons for executive session.
I'll make the motion as outlined by Ms. Lane.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? All right, meeting adjourned at 8:17 PM. Have a good night.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Kevin, for all that information.
Thank you.
My pleasure. I'll have more next week.
Sounds good.
It honestly does feel so good.